Good morning. Today's Thursday, December 3rd, 2020. We're here for a work session and as always, we'll start with the pledge legion. Catherine, can you please take the lead?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, before we begin, I have several announcements to make. First, I am very pleased to announce that beginning yesterday, a beloved ex-council person who I think we all agree cares enormously for our town, our community, and the seniors residents. He has joined my executive staff as a part-time legislative, a Jim Wooton, a friend of each of us on this town board and a friend of all of Riverhead. I am proud and thrilled to announce that he will be joining us and commence on a new senior hotline. Mr. Councilman Wooton has worked endlessly with our seniors and we will be posting the particulars of the new senior hotline. It will be available from 9:30 to 12:30 on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and the hotline will be monitored 24 hours a day. The aim and the goal of this initiative is to provide seniors with assistance in providing services and resources, allowing them to remain safely at home, thereby reducing the risk of exposure to the COVID-19 virus. Meal and grocery delivery, transportation, town services, and identification of local COVID-19 testing sites are some of the resources that will be available to our senior populations. Residents may access the hotline starting December 8th, 2020 by calling 631-727-3200, extension 653. And again, Tuesdays and Thursdays between the hours of 9:30 and 12:30, however, any messages left on the hotline, they will be responded to. Second, yesterday, along with Councilwoman Kent and Councilman Hubbard, I was honored to be part of surprising Anthony Maris and his family from Star Confectionery. Anyone residing in the town of Riverhead has found memories of Star Confectionery, better known as Papa Nick's. Nicholas Maris began a legacy in 1920 purchasing a candy store on Main Street and turning it into a nostalgic family gathering place, adding homemade ice cream and comfort food to the menu over the course of their 100-year history. This establishment continues to be an integral part and the fabric of Riverhead's history. It is not unusual to see a group of teenagers sitting on a table over from a group of senior citizens since all devouring ice cream sundaes and burgers and fries. Couples meeting on their first dates 40 years ago are now bringing their grandchildren to enjoy the homemade ice cream served in surroundings. There's still both the marble floors and tened ceilings, joining the past with the present. Of course, it would be nice if Star sundaes were still costing 40 cents, but the memories are priceless. Yesterday, News 12 surprised him and his family with a taping of the location and its history. Yesterday, Anthony was presented with a proclamation and a copy of a Norman Rockwell picture titled Runaway, and I actually thought I had a copy of it. This is Anthony and his family. This photo was an inspiration of Norman Rockwell, and you continue to live that inspiration, and we thank you for everything you've done to our community. Did anybody want to add?
Yeah, I'd just like to say I'm sorry I missed it, but the Maris family are just tremendous, a staple of our community, such a great family, and their Star Confectionery is a piece of Americana right here in Riverhead, and I congratulate them on 100 years and 100 more. God bless.
I'm going to say, and thank you, Frank. Frank was pivotal in organizing. So I want to say welcome aboard to former Councilman Jim Wooton. We're happy to have him back at Town Hall, and yes, it was a really nice event at Star Confectionery, which, as we know, we all call Papa Nick's. And speaking of devouring, I stayed and had lunch, so still, even despite COVID, they're still serving in there, just not as many people and takeout, so it was a really great day, and I was appreciative to be included. Tim, are you going to say anything?
Every Main Street in America wishes they had a Papa Nick's, but Riverhead has it, and we're so glad the Maris family invested their time, effort, and money into town in Riverhead. They've done a fantastic job, and we love having them here.
While I was sitting there, they were bringing out great big vats of homemade ice cream for the holidays.
So happy 100th anniversary to Papa Nick's, and they do have the best milkshakes anywhere on Long Island. They're homemade with homemade ice cream, and they make it in the old-style blenders, and it's really quite a place. And the Easter bunnies that they make out of the molds that are 100 years old are also fabulous right before Easter. If you want to stop in and pick up some Easter candy for your family, that's unique and novel. So congratulations, and the one thing that I will be taking to Albany with me out of my office is my giant Star Confectionery picture that is in my office. And I plan on talking about that while I'm up in Albany, so that any visitors that make their way down here, make sure they stop in. So congratulations.
All right, great. Thank you. Next, as we all know, COVID-19 positive cases in our area are rising at an alarming rate. Please be diligent and follow the protocols so we can help reduce the spread. Remember the three W's: wear a mask, wash your hands, and watch your distance. Currently, there are seven testing sites available in Riverhead town. Most recently, the iconic Bay Medical Center located at One Heroes Way began offering free testing. The information is online. If you don't have a pen ready, I'll give you the number now, 1-833-477-7239. This testing will be available until December 18th, and then yesterday, Tim Hubbard asked that we work with the employees. You want to take over?
Yeah, I spoke with the CEO of the iconic Bay Medical Center, Andy Mitchell, and we were able to set up a situation where we're going to be able to test all of the town workers. Anybody who chooses to get tested, they'll be able to go to this site on a certain date and time, and they'll be able to be tested without going through insurance or without any charge. So we know we have several, quite a few employees that are interested in being tested, and we know that's one way to stop the spread is to find out whether you're asymptomatic, and a lot of people have it and don't know they have it, so this is part of the cure.
And you don't have to have the symptoms. In certain locations, you have to be symptomatic, and here, you can just walk in. And the turnaround is very good. I know two members of our staff needed to get tested on a very quick basis. We call on Monday and Tuesday by 9 o'clock, they were able to get an appointment. So it's also an accelerated testing site. Not every site is accelerated, but the iconic is.
I just want to thank Mr. Mitchell because they're under the gun right now with patients, and I really appreciate them taking the time for us to get our town workers in there. So thank you, PBMC and Andy Mitchell.
Great. Lastly, residents are encouraged to go online to the town website and complete the town's law enforcement advisory panel survey. So far, 716 individuals have taken the survey. If you're in Town Hall, you can stop by the supervisor's office, and we'll give you a hard copy, a paper copy, if you so decide. Moving on to discussion items, the first item we have is Steve Shorga and Kristi Thordy from the Business Improvement District. They're here to present about a New Year's Eve fireworks display. Steve and Kristi.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thanks for having me. So the Bidma is proposing to host fireworks on New Year's Eve. We're looking to make it more family-oriented and have the fireworks go off a little bit earlier at 8:00 PM. Little history, we do have some funds that we put towards for the fireworks for our regular July 4th celebration, which we usually host during July 1/25. That didn't happen this year, so we do have some funds that we need to use within this year, and then the company we have worked with for many years is accruing some of those funds to be used towards next year. So that being said, the Bid is presenting that we host this on New Year's Eve. We're still in the process. Everything's been submitted at this point, paper-wise, but just still working on the process of how we can apply social distancing, whether there be people staying in their cars, or, you know, apply some signage or whatever we need to do to make that compliant and safe. For this year, we looked at some other options, maybe changing the location, but the location still will be Granjable Park. In working with the fireworks company, they looked at the regulations and distance-wise to vacant buildings and occupied buildings, and it was a little bit of a tight squeeze anywhere else, so Granjable has worked in the past, and that's where we want to maintain it.
Okay, I think it's a great idea, especially when people would be in their cars. And even if they get out of their cars, as long as they social distance, that's fine. Many of the applications that we put through, through the state, you obviously are meeting their guidelines, and just if you can ensure that once you have your full plan, you just run it through ESD.
Sure, sounds good.
And I'm sure you're probably not going to have a problem with it, and thank you for coming up with the idea, you know, gives us something to look forward to.
Yeah, and I think we want to kind of stress the fact if people are going to come in to support a downtown business, whether that be have dinner beforehand, or if you're not comfortable with that, maybe order to-go, whatever it may be. But that would obviously be much appreciated because these are the businesses that are putting funds towards these events.
And Steve, when we created the outdoor dining, then with Councilwoman, soon to be Assemblywoman Giglio, we designated, I believe, and we'll have to look into it, December 30th for outside dining, and I think we are, I'll speak to the councilwoman. We'll extend it to make sure that it includes the outside dining, and I'm also considering, and of course with the board approval, considering possibly as long as it meets all the fire codes and all the building codes, to make that a permanent.
That'd be great.
Okay, so that's something that will work with us and will work with the board, and I think that, you know, be something that if we have the extension for the outside dining to incorporate New Year's Eve, it's perfect because it does expire the day before. So that's something that, Jeff, if you don't mind, can you work on that? The outside dining permits that were issued, temporary permits, they expire, I believe, on the 30th, and we want to make sure that we extend them to incorporate the New Year's Eve event that the Bid is proposing to us, with the possibility of extending outside dining, you know, permanently as long as all, you know, building codes and fire codes are met.
Yeah, at least for the winter and spring, I would say would be a big help.
Yes, okay, so, okay, so we all need to work together, and Tim, your bid, so can you work on that with them, making sure that we can extend it with the possibility of permanency?
Absolutely.
Great, we appreciate that.
And how are you doing as far as getting the grant applications for the people that were looking to put the tents outside and the heating units and things like that, so that people would be wanting to go downtown and sit outside and eat?
Sure, so you guys voted on that two days ago or yesterday, or was that approved?
Yesterday.
Okay, yesterday, so we're good to go. So I have been receiving applications at this point. Kristi and I are going to walk around tomorrow to go door-to-door at this point to talk about a few initiatives that we have in place and to, you know, we send emails out, but we find you got to go and have, you know, verbal communications with people, unfortunately. But yeah, people seem very interested, you know, and each individual property is so different with what their needs are and what they would potentially go to put these funds towards. So that's the one thing that we've noticed so far. But yeah, it's been well-received, and that's just the portion, the one portion of it. The other portion is the marketing aspect of that. So, you know, we're really going to help push for the holidays and some of the other things that we have coming down the pike as well.
That's great, and I want to thank the Bid and Tim for working with the Veterans Advisory Committee because we have the veterans banners that you can purchase if your loved one is or was here and is a veteran. We have the veterans banners that are going to be going on the light posts, and I believe that's April and May, correct? Well, that's of April and May, so you can purchase a banner, and it'll have a picture of your veteran on the light post, and I think that they got 18 applications so far, and there's only 29 light posts, so get your applications in, and they'll be rotating on a biannual basis.
Yeah, I think it's definitely was a pleasure working with them, and, you know, we work with Townscape on the hanging baskets. The Bid has some other downtown banners that we're putting up, and then the veterans, so we're all working together to try to make downtown look great.
So thank you for that.
My pleasure.
And Steve, are you promoting that? I know that we were provided with a flyer just recently, and we have to check out because we're not permitted to solicit funds as a city, you know, as a local municipality. So we gave that to our town attorney, and they're supposed to look into it to make sure that we don't violate any monetary transfer conditions or laws or codes. However, it's a great idea, and we got to make sure that the Bid and obviously the Chamber promotes that, but thank you for doing that.
That's for the veteran banners, or, okay. Yeah, I know the cost of it really just went towards, it's a wash with the costs, you know.
It goes right to the sign company. It doesn't come through the town.
Yeah, no one's making any money on it, by any means.
The cost of the banner goes right to the sign company, and then the buildings and grounds and the Bid will work to put them up.
Yeah, I mean, some other municipalities will do that, and then whatever funds proceeds come to it go towards going back to the veterans as well, so it's also, but I don't think we have that in place, right, Jody?
No.
No, it just goes to the cost of the actual banner?
Okay, and I just want to circle back concerning outside dining. About a month ago, PSNG sent us an email stating that they wanted to supply outside heating lamps to restaurants. Where do we stand on that?
Was this separate from the grant that they had in place?
Yeah, it was a grant from PSNG, yeah.
Okay, so I think the Bid applied for it and the Chamber applied for it. As far as I know, I think the Chamber received on that. I don't think the Bid received, you know.
Okay, it goes to the same.
But I would have to ask Kristi if there's an update on that.
Yeah, it winds up under the same effort, you know, which is outside dining and heating, so, but thank you.
Yeah, Chamber's got a little bit of a broader scope, but yeah, all in all, the same.
Okay, good, perfect.
Steve, I love the idea of the fireworks. You can enjoy that anytime of the year, regardless of weather, and I think that's going to be a great event for you.
Yeah, hopefully, people come down and support downtown businesses as well.
Cold, warm, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, go get some ice cream from Anthony.
So I just wanted to mention, you know, I think about our downtown businesses, our businesses in Riverhead every day, and as you mentioned, we really need to support our businesses. I implore everybody to shop local. Last weekend, I think, was Shop Local Weekend or something, but I think we should be doing that every day. It's just such a hard time, and we want to keep these businesses going through these challenging days, and I think it's possible, you know, with COVID get on the rise, even for our restaurants, they are limited in seating, but everybody does takeout. And, you know, if we want to keep our businesses going in Riverhead, I hope we can all come together as a community and shop local and support all the local businesses.
Yes, thank you. The Bid is working on something that's going to make that very easy to accomplish, so, yes, coming out very shortly.
All right, and thank you for your work, Steve.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Enjoy. Next on our discussion agenda is from Building and Planning, an update on current and pending planning application. Our head planner, Jeff Maffree, is here with us, and Catherine Kent is going to request that this item go on the agenda, and Jeff, good morning.
And I just want to say thank you for, I'm happy that we were able to get this on the agenda, and I know that our planners are here. For me, I wanted an update as to open impending applications, just to apprise us of where things are. I know there's a lot of moving parts. I also think it's good for the community, you know, I was saying to one of the other planners, people are always asking us about projects in the community, and I think it's good for them to hear at a work session where we're at, so thank you very much.
Okay, by opening, I'd like to say you have not received the official memo from my department yet, but the Building Department revenue for the month of November was $112,600. And that brings us, sorry, a year-to-date as $790,000, and my projection for 2020, and this is prior to the pandemic, was $900,000, so.
Not that far off.
Not that far off.
Good to hear.
Yeah, that's good to hear. Thank you, Jeff.
And we'll keep you posted on that. Again, I want to keep my comments brief today. I have, as Councilman Kent mentioned, I have Brian Cunningham and Greg Berman with us. So if you have questions about a specific application, they can give you an update on where they stand, but caution us that we don't get into a lengthy discussion about any of the applications. The applicants were not notified that we're going to be talking about their application today, so I'm just going to give you very basic raw numbers. If you have questions about a specific application, you can either contact myself, Greg, or Brian, whoever's assigned to the application, and we can give you the more in-detail update on where the project stands.
And Jeff, when I requested this, I wasn't looking for a lengthy discussion. I was just looking for an update, and then, you know, from that point, if we decide we want more information, we can try to put it on at a later date and make sure the applicant knows, so I understand that.
Yep, I'm just going to give you some very raw numbers on data. Right now, the town board has 11 special permit applications pending before you, and in the town as a whole, in both the planning board and town board applications, we have 108 site plan applications. Of the 108, we have approximately 20 town board site plan applications pending. Most of those are mixed-use developments, consisting of retail restaurants on the first floor with apartments on the second floor, and the big consequence associated with that, as you all know, is the town code requirement that we limit the residential apartments in the downtown, the 500-unit cap. And as an update today, as of today, with existing development that has already been constructed and what's being proposed that is in the pipeline, we have 538 dwelling units, apartments underway or constructed in the downtown.
So what do you do about that? If there's 538 and our cap is 500, are you asking them to reduce the number of units in order to meet that 500 number?
No. Because the local law says the cap is based upon certificate of occupancy, so I do not see how the town, and again, I'm not a lawyer. Bob's not here. He stepped out. I don't see how the town could prohibit somebody from submitting an application.
Yeah, because a lot of these applications really don't go anywhere. I know we have a couple in the hot water that have been there for a few years where a correspondent hasn't come back in, so.
And you raise an excellent point. Some of the applications, and I took them off the list because some of these applications go back to 2004, they're dead. If they've wished to proceed with a project of that length, they have to submit a new application, the application fee, and update the entire package.
And from what I understand, I mean, the application process is very, very lengthy, and it has a lot of moving parts. You know, people have to get secret, you have to have Fire Marshal approval, you have that DEC approval, you have to have Suffolk, on some applications, you have to have Suffolk County planning, you have to have Department of Waterworks, right? Sewer in the district, you have landmarks, you have to have SHPO, you have to have ARC. It's endless, so by the time an application, and correct me wrong and enlighten us, when an application comes in, by the time it gets close to approval, it's totally different.
And to give you example in terms of like 14 special perm applications, that's not currently pending before you. For example, Petrosella, Yashtrander, the Howell House, you've already approved it. It's under construction. Riverhead Plaza, that was supposed to be where the movie theater was going to go, the old Walmart site, it's dead. So, and some of these other ones that are on the list are either approved and under construction or they're dead. So the 14 is not really a real number. That's what IPS is telling us, how many applications are still pending in the process.
Are these applications available to the public?
Yeah, if you just made a FOIA request, and they can come take a look at them, or if they just want a simple update, they can give our office a call, and we can tell them on the phone what the status is and if their project is still moving forward or if it's dead or not. No.
Right, and isn't it, don't they file these site plan applications with the clerk's office?
I hear.
The clerk's office?
No.
Okay.
And a newer event this year, we are all getting, we now require that applicants submit the applications electronically, so any applications as of beginning of this year, we post those online along with the agenda.
Oh, that's great.
So that if you're interested in a project, not only do you see it on the agenda, you can get the complete application with all the plans and applications, secret documents, that sort of thing. So it saves you a trip to downtown, saves you a FOIA request. You can print them out, show them with your neighbors.
That's great.
So Jeff, I'm just looking for, you know, just a couple sentences on projects, just to know where they stand at this moment, okay?
No, yep.
Jefferson, didn't we consider legislation not too long ago that was giving the planning department the authority to send out letters to applicants telling them that their files were dead because we had not received correspondence from them in many years? And rather than keeping those on a running list from 2004, it would make sense to send them a letter saying, there has been no activity on your file in two years, you know? Are you going to file a, you know, a subsequent application, or are you, what process are you going through now? And if they don't respond, I thought it was within 60 days, then we were going to take the file and archive it.
Yeah, that's going to require some discussion because, you know, what period do we end it, so to speak? If an application's been announced since 2004, it's dead. I'm not going to enter into conversation with them about, oh, they just made a letter saying we're continuing with it. At that point, it's dead. The project's been, you know.
And especially with the master plan update, where the zoning on those particular piece of property where we haven't had any correspondence with over many years, the zoning may change entirely. So I think that it's important that the board consider that for next year, possibly, you know, vetting these files that have been in the file cabinet since 2004.
And by the way, this is something we have been talking about in Code Revision. We've been working on this. This was actually brought, because Code Revision, as you know, is an in-house committee, and this was brought to us because there are projects that have been sitting there a really long time.
And going nowhere fast.
Yeah, Jeff, I just wanted, so Jeff, I wanted to just ask about a couple of projects.
Yep, before you do, just one last major category, and that's major subdivisions with the planning board. Right now, we have seven total major subdivision applications pending. If approved as applied for or proposed, we'd have a total additional 77 dwelling units in the town, single-family residences.
So those would all pay into the park and rec fees, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, I hope we get all of those fees. So just wondering where we are with the Suffolk Theater?
We are going back and forth with the applicant to get a complete application. We met with Bob Costoli and his architect about a month or so ago, maybe a little bit longer than that, to know exactly what we're looking for. I know that the architect's been going back and forth through emails and conversations with Greg Berman. As of this date, Greg, I'm assuming we still don't have the complete information submitted to us.
Okay, yeah, we've seen that. We've looked at that a couple times with the ARP.
Yeah.
Island Water Park?
That's an interesting one because it's in the Pine Barrens, and we have, and again, Bob Kozakovich and Dan from the town attorney's office, and Greg and I have been working on that. We found a letter from the attorney from the Pine Barrens Commission from 2000, I think it was, back when I was on the commission. I remember reviewing that letter as a commission member, saying that all the properties within the fence had upcount as not under the jurisdiction of the Pine Barrens Commission pursuant to the Pine Barrens Plan. Therefore, Island International would not be subject to the Pine Barrens Commission, so it'd be solely within your purview as well as DEC and the other outside agencies, so that application's moving forward.
Jeff, as a commissioner for the Pine Barrens, one of five, there's five of us, Brookhaven, Ed Romayne, myself from Riverhead, and Jay Schneiderman from Southampton, and we have a governor's representative, which is the chairwoman of the Pine Barrens, and we also have the, someone from Steve Bellone's office, and we will be meeting on that, so I prefer that you don't discuss it.
Right.
We have been in executive session, and at our next meeting, we will be addressing the Pine Barrens, and I think that we should remove the Pine Barrens discussion because we are commissioners and we all will be making a designation on this, and we have spoken to council, we have had meetings, and we've also have gone into executive session.
Yeah, that's an excellent point.
Yeah, so let's hold off that conversation now, give the respect to the commission, the Pine Barrens Commission, and let us do our job.
Yeah, absent the commission, Greg is proceeding with the review of the application, though.
Perfect, thank you.
How about the Munchnick project?
We got revised plans as. We got revised plans as of the end of last week regarding interpretation of the New York State Fire Code. And Craig Zidic and the chief, fire chief, Riverhead Fire Chief have been reviewing it. I have not heard back from them.
And Catherine, I'm glad you brought that up. That project has been in the works for many, many years. I asked you this morning, we need to move it forward. Either we go forward or we don't. We owe it to the applicant. It's been years. And the property's laying there vacant. If, if it gets developed, we're going to collect taxes. So I'm asking you, there were new plans submitted, whatever concerns everyone had, apparently they were addressed. That's your expertise and the fire marshals, and can you please see if we can expedite this, this quickly? I think it's been around for three years, four years?
Well, they, they submit plans.
Longer?
This is, I think, the sixth set of revised plans, so it's, it's been back and forth. The application was pos tech by the town board requiring an environmental impact statement. The consultant, Nelson Pope and Fourhees, can't complete that without knowing the results of this interpretation of the fire code. Once that's been established, they can go ahead and complete the draft environmental impact statement.
Perfect, thank you.
And I believe what triggered the environmental impact statement is the number of units being over one hundred units. Am I correct?
That, and also the size, scale, and mass of the property. It's in a historic district. It's proximity to East End Arts, for example. It's a very massive building next to a very small building.
Well, and on the other side, another massive building.
Yeah.
And a hundred and seventy-seven apartments, correct? Yeah, that's a lot. So CMA, but we know where that's already a legal thing. There's nothing new with that. Breezy Hill?
Greg, I want you to take that one.
Good morning. So Breezy Hill was an application to establish a C and D facility on, I believe it's seventeen ninety-two Middle Road. The project was issued a positive declaration by the planning board. We had a scoping session in February. We adopted a final scope. At this point, the ball is in the applicant's court to prepare a DEIS. I have been getting calls from a neighboring property owner. They are doing some groundwater testing, establishing groundwater flow gradient, that sort of thing. So at this point, it's upon the applicant to submit the DEIS for review, and then we move forward with that.
Thank you, Greg. AK Venture, HK Ventures?
Again, HK Ventures was issued a positive declaration by the planning board. We had the scoping session. I believe it was the first meeting in November. We adopted the final scope. The planning board adopted the final scope on November nineteenth. Again, similar, now it's incumbent upon the applicant to prepare the DEIS and submit that for review.
Riverhead Solar Two, but we know where that's at because that's ninety-four six. Just the brewery that's going downtown a bit.
The town board, town board granted that special permit. I know, you know, they've got building permits, they've got to pay key water money fees. But the town board did grant that special permit.
And I had asked you, there's an office, a medical office coming in in Aquabob?
Correct. There's actually two medical offices, both on the northwest corner of Main Road and Union and on the northeast corner of Main Road and Union. As you may, the board may recall, it has been a while. I think COVID kind of jammed them up a little bit. We were waiting on a traffic impact statement to analyze both of those proposed developments and their impacts to that Main Road and Union Avenue intersection. So right now, we are waiting on the preparation of a TIS. Once they submit that, we'll review it and it'll bring it back to the board.
And New York Cancer and Blood?
That's a special permit. That's one I'm not familiar. It's that, I believe that's the one on fifty-eight. I think it was the old PC Richards Building. That one, that one I'm not from, I, I can't speak to that specifically. I'm not.
Well, we can touch base on that another time. Just going, but I believe that they were looking at another location in town, and I thought that it was on Middle Road somewhere. And I, they reached out to me and I said, any change to the zoning would have to be done through the updated master plan, and you would have to make an argument to the town board as to why you think that's a good location for New York Cancer and Blood. So I know that they were looking at a location over there, but.
I'm not, from what I heard, I don't think that they were too happy with the two locations that got identified, so that might not take off. And this is very common. People have applications in, and they might not pursue it. And of course, it's going to, plans will have to change. So I think it might be a good idea just to, once you start receiving electronic applications, just put them up so the public can just click in at their own convenience and see what's going on. Because this is a very, very, very lengthy, with a huge amount of, of, of parts. And, and we of course want to keep the public involved, so even if it's just the initial and it gets updated, is that possible from the planning department?
I mean, we can.
That's a great idea.
Would you, you mean when we receive an application, just to post it online?
Yeah, just, yeah.
Yeah, I think especially because they're coming in electronically, I think you could work with IT and put a planning link together. And you click on planning, it lists all the applications. They can click on the application, it'll take them right to the application, the plans and everything.
Yeah, and, and, great, thank you. And, and I'm, I'm sure Chip is great and he'll make that happen.
Great idea.
Thank you. More work for Chip. And, and be mindful that these applications, when you first see them, you know, don't get all hot and wired and going, oh, this is happening because, you know, it has to meet the zoning and it has to go through a rigorous approval process, and finally, the town board. And on many instances, like our solar project, they have to go before state reveal, so we don't have to say if they're approved or not, so.
Correct.
So that's one I want to ask about, and then I don't know if anybody else wants to ask about any. Probably nothing new on Sonic. I know they were trying to look to see if they could get Sonic here.
So Sonic, Sonic was reviewed by the planning, and again, that had been reviewed almost ad nauseam by the planning board when Karen, when Karen had it. So it was presented to the town board. It was again re-presented to the planning board. We did get some comments. They had really, it was more site plan comments with regards to the depth of landscaping along County Route Fifty-eight. There were some concerns, which again were echoed in my staff report, in my review, just in terms of traffic circulation on the inside of that site. There were some comments that is it possible to reduce the size of that building, the retail building? Because that's not a, when we deal with a special permit application, this is not just a clean special permit. They are kind of combining a special permit use, but it's also inherently tied to that other retail building. So it's not just as cleanly where we can say it meets the special permit criteria. We kind of have to look at it, look at it as a total project. So really, the next point, we did initiate the secret coordinator review, currently waiting for comments back from involved agencies. The next step would be, once we get those comments back, bring it back to the town board, have you address those comments. Because really, the, the special permit tied to that site, it's not going to go anywhere without the town boards granting that special permit.
We're also going to have a special hearing on it, correct? So that's where the public is going to be, will weigh in, and it's great because now you have all, all the moving parts. Most, most of the requirements and codes and reviews have occurred, and now you have a tight package. And that's, it goes before the board, and then we have a public hearing, and that's the purpose, is for the public to chime in and for us to, you know, to hear from the public concerning this project. But at that point, the project is pretty much complete and ready to go when it gets approved, so.
And I can tell you, when I was in Albany, there was a Sonic right side, right outside the hotel, and they did not have as many covered spaces. I think they had ten in total with the drive-through.
Twenty-two.
It wasn't the, it wasn't the model that we saw, yeah. Yeah, I actually did watch the planning board session on that. One of the comments from one of the members of the planning board that was that they thought it was just too much packed into one thing, so.
And I mean, that, that has been a common sentiment throughout the entirety of that review. I mean, again, I, I don't want to get too into the depths on that, but it's, it's kind of a unique situation with the, with regards to how they have to install their sewer line, so.
Right.
I mean, that, that's kind of a financial, you know, financial responsibility for the applicant. You know, I understand he's got to make his property profitable, but at the same time, we're not going to approve something where there's safety concerns, traffic concerns, et cetera.
So that's all I had unless somebody else on the board has some other ones they want to inquire about, or unless you want to bring up some that were overlooked. I really do appreciate it, and hopefully we can get updates every once in a while on open and pending projects. Thank you.
Yep.
Jeff, I just wanted to go back to the five hundred apartments downtown. As you know, that's something we're going to work on with the comprehensive plan. That's got to be addressed. And secondly with that is the concern that you mentioned is five hundred and thirty-eight in the pipe, so to speak, total. Right. The, the method for which it's determined to reach that five hundred needs some work. Because the, the, the current code states that the first five hundred apartments to receive a CO. I mean, that's, if you have four hundred and ninety apartments and, and already, and two other buildings start building, and one gets a CO first and one doesn't, that's, I don't know why it was ever set up that way. That's, that's totally wrong and we need to correct that.
Just, and I completely agree with you, Tim. Just the five thirty-eight, five hundred and thirty-eight, two hundred and forty-six are currently pending applications. Now that two hundred and forty-six and a hundred and seventy-seven are what's associated with the Rama project.
Good.
It's a big, that's a massive project.
It's big.
His new site plan revision, I assume, will be less apartments because he was removing both wings.
Yeah, he had a overhang?
Yeah, both, both of those overhangs were being removed, so I'm assuming unless he reconfigures.
That's been the source of the interpretation of the fire code as to roof overhangs?
Right.
And as we know, the fire marshals have been concerned about some of these massive buildings just because of where they are. I guess it's hard to get, it's hard to get in there and as always.
It has to do with far access roads?
Right.
You're saying far, far as three points of far access around the perimeter of the building? And that's been a source of much discussion over the last year.
I, I have a question about the Georgia Green Project. How close are they to getting certificates of occupancy? And have they been over to the church and Mr. Roskis' house to look at any damage that was done during the drilling there?
They have a temporary CVO. They don't have a permanent. They have a number of smaller items they have to finish. I don't expect them to get that until springtime of next year. I did speak with David Gallo. He has spoken with both the church and Mrs. DeBras, I don't know.
Mrs. Doroski, Doroska? Doroska.
Thank you. I don't want to mispronounce her name. And he apparently, he has satisfied Mr. Roska. He has not heard anything back from the church.
Okay, well, I wish that we could confirm that because Brad had a very good relationship with Mrs. Doroska and with the church as far as the correspondence and the monitoring and things of that nature. I don't want to just leave it up to the applicant to say, we spoke with them and they're okay.
Okay, I understand.
Jeff, before you go, if it's easy, you had a list of who, can you just read the list of the special permits?
Sure.
You said there were eleven, just so I can make sure. We're going to post that on the website, right?
Yeah, let's just post it on the website.
It's just a quick list. I, I'm not asking for any information on it, just the name.
Okay, I'm just going to go with the ones that are pending and not the ones that are approved and already, already in construction. Jeansport Manor Inn, Riverhead Plaza, which I think is a dead application anyway, Chernoff. That was approved. Real Life Church, Greg, is that one approved?
Yeah.
That was done. The building permits are issued. Okay, that one's done. Glass Green House. That one's dead. Swan Point Resort, that's the big one. That's probably the biggest one that you have pending before you. That's the former.
That's Bronco?
Bronco. That's incomplete. That's incomplete, yeah, yeah. But it's, it's the biggest one that you have.
And I know the Open Space Committee is hot on that one, so that, that should be resolved through.
Yeah, that has to take its course, yeah. And let's not talk about it yet because, remember, we don't want to have somebody saying they're discussing application and.
We're not, we're just, I just want the list, so.
Just get the list.
We have the two medical office buildings that Greg updated you on. Crown Castle, which is supposed to be the new cell tower over at Epcal, that has gone nowhere. That's Fresh Pond. Fresh Pond, thank you, yep. That was a two for one.
Right.
Yep.
I forgot that one.
And then we have what's called the Landmark of Riverhead. That's the former West Marine Building. That's the forty-six unit property proposed by Wayne Steck. And then you have eighteen oh seven Middle Road. I mean, that's the propane storage facility. And that's it for the special permits.
Thank you, Jefferson.
Okay. Okay, one else want to add to this? Okay, move forward. Thank you, Jeff. Have a good day.
Did anybody come in?
Greg.
Oh, okay, I know, I was trying to check to see if.
Next up, we have Councilwoman Kent presenting the most recent part of the ongoing water conservation effort. There's a brochure.
Bring them in, see if that's them.
Published, and Catherine?
Yeah, and thank you for getting this on the agenda so quickly. I just wanted to mention, I know my councilmate's got it, but I'm going to pass it out to them anyway. We, Glenys Berry, who has done, Glenys is here, and I'm going to bring her in in a minute, who, I have to say, Glenys is one of our really amazing, I know Frank will agree, volunteers in the town of Riverhead. Glenys has the art sites building over on the river. She and her husband, Hidaki, are architects. Hidaki serves on the ARB. Glenys serves on the Downtown Revitalization Committee. And Glenys has been very active in water conservation, really in our whole area, in Southhold, I believe, in Greenport possibly, and in Riverhead. And as you guys know, she got a grant, and she has used some of the grant to do a, a brochure about water conservation. I want to make sure I have everything because she wouldn't ever brag about herself. Also, I think Mark Hobner, so on this, I'll, I'll, I'll thank a few people on the brochure, but I want to give it out if you guys didn't bring it in. And then I did ask Frank if he could talk a little bit in the beginning about why water conservation is so vital in our area.
Okay, thanks, Catherine. I'd like to thank you for putting this together and, and reiterate our praise for Glenys, who's done.
That has to go online.
Who's done really the most of this work.
Oh, perfect, okay.
So that, that's again, thank you, Catherine, and thank you, Glenys, for doing this. It's Glenys who's been funding this and really putting in the most work out of all of us. So this is valuable. It, it really shows that the leadership of Riverhead and their water district are taking conservation as seriously as possible and the management of our water resources. This document is something we're going to distribute to customers, and it, it goes over some basic statistics, how things work, and most importantly, recommendations on how to, to better use water more efficiently. It speaks to the water restrictions we put in earlier this year with Councilwoman Giglio and Deputy Attorney Emery Prandente. And it goes over all these recommendations because we're not asking you to get rid of your lawn and other outdoor water uses. We're just learning and educating you on how to keep them and just use them a little bit more efficiently. It'll help me run the water district. It'll help you save money on your watering. And it'll, it'll prevent us from having to build out a water system that is going to cost us a fortune, that we'll only use for a few months a year, about eight hours a day. So the more efficiently we can use our outdoor water usage, the more we'll all save in the long run. So I, I just think this is a good idea. It's going to benefit the district, the town, and I'd like to thank Glenys again.
So I want to see, Glenys, do you want to chime in or bring up some points or talk to us about this?
Is she?
I think you might be muted.
Uh, no, she's not. We don't see the mic.
I can't hear her.
Turn up your speakers.
We can't hear you.
Glenys might need to turn on your speakers from your computer.
Looks like she's in a car. She, she had an onsite visit today for work.
Okay.
Yeah. And I don't know if Mark's there. Mark Hobner, is that? Yeah, let's see who's there. Mark Hobner, I think, was there. The challenges of Zoom. Can you, yeah. Mark, can you unmute? Did you want to add anything, Mark?
In this case, just use our error because we are functional, so it's a part of training individuals to learn to use it.
Yes, to do star six, right?
Mark, could you hit star six if you'd like to talk?
Yeah, they're not familiar with Zoom.
Glenys, can you, we, let's see if we can hear you yet. No?
She obviously can hear us.
No, she's trying. She's trying so hard to talk to us. All right, we'll see if they can come in. But I did want to mention, you know, Glenys wrote the brochure. She does a tremendous amount of work.
Here we go.
There we go, somebody's there.
Here we go. All right, thanks for the opportunity to speak. And Tim, to your point about, we're not asking people to get rid of their lawns. That's not the issue at all. We're just asking people to use their water in a smart manner. And we've got a lot of science behind us on this. I've been working with Cornell, Debbie Aller over, she's the stewardship and soil scientist over at Cornell. And we're doing a webinar actually next week on soil, and a lot of it has to do with smart watering. So Glenys and I have been working on with, with all of our environmental advisory committee people too. So, uh, Glennis and I have been working on with, with all of our environmental advisory committee people too, to get, uh, education and outreach done so that people can use these best practice or best management practices and still maintain what they, they, uh, they prefer to see in the, in the, uh, form of a lawn around the property. There's a lot of other things too. It's rainwater capture, it's, uh, you know, Jody had mentioned cisterns some time ago. We're putting in rain barrels and capture, rainwater capture, rooftop capture at the Pulaski Street School. Um, we're, we're proponing for, uh, more native plantings. We've got an, an amazing amount of, uh, opportunity to get native plantings in which actually use a lot less water or no water at all. They're drought resistant, they're salt resistant, there are varieties that are deer resistant. So, um, we've, we've got an opportunity here for education and outreach going forward, and we're planning on pushing this out in the spring. Uh, the other thing is, uh, not just irrigation, but toilets. Uh, we know we've got the innovative alternative waste water treatment systems, uh, set up for the county to start implementing in the, uh, three hundred thousand properties that we need to get done. But a lot of it, uh, can be done through upgrading toilets from three or four gallon per flush down to one point two. I bought a, uh, one point two gallon flush, uh, toilet a few weeks ago, and our water bill just plummeted. So, um, there you go. Thank you very much.
And Glennis did have some, um, they were giving away, you know, some, Mark, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, Glennis' grant came from the Long Island Community Foundation, and, uh, one third of it is going to the Riverhead School District for the high school to analyze their water use for irrigation on their, on their sports fields. They're, uh, changing it to smart metering, uh, smart controlling, and, uh, water efficient heads. And they're doing all the math on that, um, they're doing an amazing job over there. Um, we've also got monies, uh, available for rain sensors because I know it just bugs everybody to no end, driving by somebody's lawn in the middle of a rainstorm and watching the sprinklers go off. So, we've got, uh, monies for that as well, and that could be residential or commercial, but we're starting a pilot program for the residential sector first. They're very cheap, they're like twenty bucks, and, uh, we can even put a little brochure together on how to, uh, how to make that happen for people.
Yeah, and they were, they were going to do it for a certain number of people, and they still have openings for that. They still have some available. I believe there was an article in one of the papers, I don't remember if it was River, I think it was Riverhead Local did a story or it, but there's a link where, or there's a place where people can reach out and get that information.
If I could just touch on that for a second because when, the last time we had discussed the rain sensors, I did reach out to some local irrigation companies to determine what the cost actually was to change out one of the sprinkler heads, and they told me it was between three hundred and fifty and five hundred dollars because they have to have, not only buy the rain sensor, but they have to take out the old one, put in the new one, and they have to have their workers comp disability, general liability insurance in order to work on someone's private home. So, I'm just wondering if you can possibly put together a how-to-do-it-yourself brochure so that if a homeowner wants to replace their own rain sensor, you know, and put a rain sensor in, they know how to do it themselves so they may not have to hire an irrigation company to do that. Because I guess, uh, running a business, an irrigation company, they look at costs for different things, and that's, that was the going rate to three different plumbing irrigation companies that I spoke to in changing out a sprinkler head to make it, um, you know, the rains, put the rain sensor in. So, that is great. I'm happy to hear about the grant funding for the rain sensors. Hopefully, I'll be able to help you get more money when I'm in Albany.
Just to jump in, Jody, because I'm glad you brought that up. Um, actually, through the Environmental Committee, it was Kenny Rothwell that looked into the rain sensors, and I think they're only like twenty dollars or something there. And then we were having a discussion about, you know, if people had trouble installing them because Kenny said they're actually, he, he says they were pretty easy to install, that we could actually have people that go and help get them installed. So, I mean, it is, it ends up being a big savings for lots of people. And I think there was also some money to maybe change out some of the toilets and such.
Yes.
And that money is available because it's through a grant, and we are looking for more people that are interested, right? Fred, Mark, what is-
I can, uh, I can verify what both of you guys are speaking about. The parts for irrigation are very inexpensive. The cost comes when you hire a business, and Jody spoke to that. The parts, if you want to do them yourself, I don't know, twenty dollars, but they are certainly much more reasonable than hiring a company, so.
He said they were twenty, he looked into it.
Yeah, but that's the cheapest part of doing the, the project, are the parts, right.
It's the smart controllers probably cost about three to five hundred dollars. That's, that's the brains of the system.
Right.
And the, does rain sensors sometimes work with the sent, the smart controller or sometimes not? Oh, I want to remind everybody, the town of Riverhead is gonna pay for smart controls and rain sensors for all of our parks and all of our big irrigation accounts.
But you're correct in that the smart sensor is the major expense. It's the brain that, when it's raining, it tells the sprinkler head, you know, to shut off the system.
Yeah, they're really complicated. Some of them even communicate, uh, on the internet and monitor local weather and communicate, and drive the irrigation based on that. That's where we're gonna apply them where we can do that, and then when, if you can't do that, you use just rain sensors that are monitoring the actual, you know, precipitation and, and adjusting the irrigation off of that.
Right, but I know that Stan Carey has been very aggressive, as I brought this up a few years ago at a planning board meeting, actually, before Tim took over, as far as, uh, requiring a lot of the commercial site plans and things of that nature to have the smart sensor system and the rain sensors on their irrigation systems.
Absolutely, and moving forward, we're gonna work really close together to, to make sure that that happens.
So, we've got great stuff happening. Um, thank you, Mark, and I thought-
Thank you.
I'm sorry that Glennis couldn't get in, but Glennis, uh, was working today and she was out on a site. So, um, I just have a, a couple of questions, Mark, if you don't mind. The, oh, did he le- I didn't know if he left. Sorry.
No, you can't get rid of me that fast.
He's still there. When it comes to the, when it comes to the gallons per day in the first part of the brochure where it says, "An analysis of residential users of public water in Southhold found that summer use was over twice the national average." How many properties in Southhold are on public water? Because I know that the Suffolk County Water Authority has been trying to break through Riverhead to get to Southhold and that a lot of those people in Southhold are on wells. How did you get that number? Just so I'm better educated for a district that I'll be representing.
Yeah, um, Glennis has been doing, she, she crunched the numbers for thirty-five thousand households, um, in a couple of districts. So, she's got all those numbers, Jody. I mean, she's got a spreadsheet that would knock you down. So, it took her months to actually go through those, uh, household by household.
And what, what public water supply are they on?
Um, except for Greenport, Greenport's got their own, um, I'm not sure.
It's Suffolk County Water, and they operate Greenport Water Districts, uh, they have a management contract.
That's Greenport, I'm saying Southhold.
Southhold is all Suffolk County Water.
It is, so they come from Greenport and then pump into Southhold?
No, they, they-
That's our water.
They have small, they, they have a number of wells throughout the North Fork and a large ground storage tank at Laurel Lake. They're gonna build a second one further out east. So, th- they have very challenging conditions out there. There's not a big robust aquifer system like we have on the west side of Riverhead. But we deal with those conditions on the east side of Riverhead too. Basically, you have a lot of small wells instead of fewer big wells.
Okay, so that's where they got the information from. So, Suffolk County Water Authority is serving several of the houses there.
Oh, yeah.
Glennis actually, as they stated, Glennis did a huge project in Southhold.
Yeah.
Um, and she does have spreadsheets and such, if you want to touch base with her.
That's great, I'd love to see it because I'd love to help you when I'm in Albany.
And she's also, you know, she's looking to do something in Riverhead. She's working in-
Oh, yeah, we, our numbers are in there too. Our numbers are huge, but we serve water a little bit differently because we have large communities and, uh, say, like, a mo- a mobile home park may be master metered, so it's one service, but it could have like two hundred things on it. So, I looked into our numbers, they seemed really high, but they're true. I think it's a function of how we're set up, not that people in Riverhead use like an extreme amount of water compared to everybody else.
Right. And then the other thing that I had, I don't know if Catherine, you had brought to the committee, Ernesto Rossini had done a, um, he had done a video at the, uh, Pulaski Street School about water conservation, and I think that some of those things could probably be included in here. I know that in the outdoor water conservation, like, one of the big top issues was washing the car, where people wash their car and they don't have a nozzle on the hose, and the hose is just open and running, and you see the water in front of the people's houses, like, that's a waste of water and it costs the homeowner money. So, that might be something that you want to put on the outdoor water conservation part of the brochure.
Sure, washing patios, uh, cars, decks, yes, absolutely.
Power washing houses, yes.
Yep.
Okay, so, before we go, that was everything, right, Jody? Yeah? Before we go, just a few people to thank. Um, obviously, I want to thank Glennis, and, uh, Glennis wrote the brochure, and Frank and Mark and I sort of reviewed it and helped tweak it. Um, Chris Wedge and Jean Markle did all the graphics, and as someone stated, um, brought up L.I. Community Foundation you brought up. They, they paid for the printing. So, um, this hasn't cost the town anything, and I think it'll be very helpful to the town. Obviously, education is key, and if you get a chance, we're gonna put this on the website, and then we'll be distributing them after they're printed. And it's really pretty simple steps. Um, she talks about what are good practices, what are better, and what are the best practices. She goes over what, um, indoor water conservation, someone who works at Town Hall already told me they thought they were gonna have to take a shorter shower, um, and outdoor water conservation. So, um, I think it's very helpful, and I'm very proud of the work that everybody did, so thank you all.
Me too, and I think also, because there is grant funding available for some of these things, I think that if you had the name of the person and the phone number to contact if you were interested in applying for a grant to convert to the rain sensors or change out your toilet.
That was in the paper.
But that could be on here.
Oh, okay.
And on, which, which will also be on the website.
I'm not sure if it went to the printer already, but if it didn't, I'll bring that up, okay?
Yeah, because, I mean, the washing the car and the outdoor, uh, patios and power washing and stuff like that, as Mark said, should also be on here. So, I hope it didn't go to the printer because you're, it's going on the town, it's sponsored by the town of Riverhead.
I don't know, well, Glennis was- gonna be in here, but-
The town board hasn't seen it yet.
Yes, they have, everything, well, the supervisor saw it and the town attorney saw that. I don't think it went to the printer.
I don't remember, well, I saw it yesterday because you gave it to us because we had to put it up.
Right.
But I had not seen it.
Yes, I don't think it's been printed yet, but I think they are printing it.
Well, this is, this is just one of many opportunities to give public information out, so we'll have plenty of opportunities to inform the public in many different ways.
Right, we have the water.
Right. And Frank, the point. Yep.
Right.
Right, but if we're gonna do it and we're gonna present it to the board and we get input from the board, then it should be done with-
Does that say town of Riverhead on it?
Yes.
Yeah, it's got our town seal.
Okay, that should have been cleared by the board, absolutely.
We, we anticipate using this document for many years, so I don't know that we should, that the, the program is, is not gonna last many years. So, we have to take that into consideration. I'm gonna use these, we're gonna get ten thousand of these at the district and hand them out for many years to come. So, if there's something about this, uh, where you get the-
Right.
The grants, there's a limited supply of those, so in a year from now, we might not have many left.
Sure.
Yeah, but then you just say, "I'm sorry, the grant funding ran out."
That's true. I mean, you guys decide what's on the brochure.
Well, just so we're clear, I am presenting it to you today, that's what I'm doing.
I know, but I'm hoping it's gonna go to the-
So, thank you so much, Frank, and, um, thank you, Mark, and everybody for their work, and we'll keep moving along.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Catherine. Last, our town attorney, Bob Kasekevich, is here to explain matters surrounding the Riverhead Solar Two project transfer from an Article Ten application to a ninety-four C. Bob, can you please come forward?
Good morning.
Good morning.
You're wearing your Christmas tie.
Yes, I am, because I forgot to do it on Tuesday. Um, I, I know that Councilman Bayrott did, um, express that if it's gonna, the discussion turns on the particulars of Riverhead Solar Two project that he would, uh, look to recuse himself from the discussion. I really wanted to just, uh, because in light of the letter that came in that the board was made aware of and the public's made aware of, um, that we just kind of go through just a little bit of a, a primer or just a kind of an overview of what ninety-four C is. Um, as far as any particular questions, you know, if I don't touch on them, we can hopefully address them. Uh, folks can get the information by going on the website. There is a website set up for the new sighting entity, which is known as the Office, let me just find it because I know I have it written here, but, um, the Office of Renewable Energy Sighting. Um, it's known as O.R.E.S. They do have a website set up, which is O.R.E.S. dot N.Y. dot gov. And, uh, anybody who's interested can go to that website and, and get some additional detail. As indicated, this discussion got, um, precipitated or, or put forward because of the letter that came in on November twenty-fifth, uh, the day before Thanksgiving, concerning the intentions to transfer the process to a ninety-four C. Ninety-four C is in the executive law of the state of New York, Article Six. For those who really want to read something and, and don't have anything else to do, you can certainly go to the original bill, which I, was, was, uh, very long. It's, it was put into the budget bill. Uh, seventy-five oh eight was the Senate bill, Assembly bill was ninety-five oh eight. You go to about page one oh two, one oh three, and you find Part J, 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 and that's when it becomes, uh, important as far as this particular act. But if you have nothing else to do and you need, you, you can't fall asleep, go, go read it. It took effect on April third. Uh, it's known as the Accelerated Renewable Energy Growth and Community Benefit Act. And I'm gonna refer to it sometimes like that, but probably just referring to it as the Act. Um, its design was so that we can, at the state level, quote unquote, achieve some of the C.L.C.P.A. targets, which are the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which, uh, for two thousand and thirty are stating that the state, statewide energy generation will be, at least seventy percent of that will be by renewable energy. Um, as indicated, it's established for the first time in this office, known as O.R.S. They're gonna be within the Department of State, and, uh, they will be charged with major renewable energy facilities. And those are facilities that are twenty-five megawatts or more, although there are exceptions that allow somebody to transfer into the ninety-four C, if, uh, we want to get into that.
But we don't have, we, we only have the Solar Two project that is eligible to go into the ninety-four C because they're over twenty-five megawatts.
Well, actually, actually, that's not one hundred percent accurate because Nextera, if they decided to do so, uh, I was going to hold off on that till the end, but I'll, I'll jump to it right now. Section ninety-four C four G states that, um, an entity that's, uh, a project between twenty megawatts and not more than twenty-five megawatts can also make an application to transfer to ninety-four C.
And, and it circumvents all of local municipal processes?
Almost all of them. The, uh, the thing it will, does not circumvent is, is, uh, where a local agency is charged with enforcement of the New York State Building Code. So, New York State Building Code issues, to the extent that a local municipality has, uh, um, authority to enact those, those are still gonna rest with the local agency as far as, you know, uh, compliance with the fire codes, compliance with building codes, stuff like that.
Yeah, this was, I mean, from what I'm being told and speaking with somebody that has been on the Energy Committee for years in Albany, when I was there with your orientation yesterday, is that, you know, this is an executive order from the governor. It did not go through the legislature, and it's really designed to circumvent the municipalities as to where these solar arrays can go and how fast the process is. So, it's, um, where we have with Nextera given it a thorough review. I don't know that the review will be as thorough once it's taken into the state. I know that Mark Harriman had called me back in May, I think it was, from Newsday, to discuss how I felt and how he had also spoken to other leaders and supervisors throughout Suffolk County as far as usurping the, the town codes and the local zoning to put these arrays basically wherever they want.
Uh, again, this is gonna be only applicable to those that are twenty-five megawatts or greater or those who opt in between twenty and twenty-five.
Understood.
So, anything smaller than that's still gonna remain at local control. And I'm not sure what they're saying about an executive order because this was part of the budget bill.
Yes.
So, it was, in fact, a Senate bill, Assembly bill, and then passed into law. It took effect as of April three. It's a law, it's on the books, it's in the public service law. Uh, there was, there was, uh, it was, it was part of the budget bill.
There was a vote on ninety-four C. There was a vote in, in creating-
Both houses.
Okay, but there was a vote, but it was a budget vote.
It was part of the budget bill, that's correct.
It was not an individual vote on this particular committee and this particular legislation.
As, as they've done in, in the last couple of years, they have these thirty, I mean, three hundred, four hundred page bills and stuck in there in the process, they, they put these in. This was done that way.
Yeah, so just to simplify things, um, you know, the, the state has high goals for renewable energy.
Correct.
And I believe this was put into place because they were trying to streamline the process and move it along, um, just for us on the local level because we are getting a lot of solar in Riverhead. I mean, and, and personally, I don't feel that we put Nextera through a really thorough review. But, um, I mean, we, obviously, we would, we want to keep things within our own jurisdiction. I mean, there is a concern once it goes to, um, ninety-four C. But I think it was put into place because they were trying to move things along, move the process along, correct?
Uh, again, yeah, the, the state, if you look at the legislation, it actually states the purpose, and the purpose is to provide for- states the purpose. And the purpose is to provide for one siting agency at the state level. And they say that it's to permit major renewable energy facilities in this state and to provide a single forum in which the Office of Renewable Energy, Energy Siting may undertake a coordinated and timely review of these proposed major energy facilities. And, and all, the, the concept is they want to achieve those C L C P A targets. That's the reason.
Okay, so let's just cut to the chase. Anything over twenty-five megawatts gets approved by the state and we have no choice as to whatever designation they give us.
That, that hasn't changed from the Article Ten. Uh, so from the Article Ten to the ninety-four C, anything larger than, than twenty-five megs is going to be a single siting agency.
And, and, and whatever they designate, we have to, um, uh, go by and, uh, concerning the building, um, the state is not, um, interfering with our building code. They will remain the same, correct?
The, uh, if, if you go, that's correct. I mean, the, the draft regulations that are, again, on the ORIS site, because under the law, they had one year in which to draft rules and regulations. They have published those.
Okay, yeah.
They were published in September and the comment period is actually ending on December seventh. So if you go again to the ORIS site, you can see the proposed regulations they're putting in place. And they actually, on one of them, indicate clearly that the local jurisdictions enforcement of the state building code is not subject to their reg.
Right. So that's just the electrical permit to actually install the solar panels, but it's not saying the state has jurisdiction as to where they go because it.
They have siting authority. That's correct.
Above the zoning. So, you know, Eptal could turn into a giant solar array if it's over twenty-five acres.
Please don't say that.
I'm just saying, this is, this is very serious.
It is.
This is very serious. And I think that it requi- it requires a response from the town board or from the town attorney to the state in objection to this. And you, speaking with other supervisors that don't want the state to just say, "It's going here and we're going to approve it right away." And all the reason I didn't really like the idea of neg decking Nextera, but, um, it's a thing we hadn't, and that was in, um, review right now. At what point can they, the ninety, does the ninety-four C come into play?
It's effective now.
Since April.
It was effective since April.
No, I don't mean timeframe. I mean, with a project.
They, they have the ability to make that application to transfer.
At any time. And then what about the.
Again, that section of law allows them to do that.
And what about negotiating the pilot payments and community benefits and things of that nature? Does that go about?
There are, there are provisions in there for doing that without any specificity of, to the amounts and how that's done. But, uh, pilot payments, community, host agreements are part of the ninety-four C discussion. And they were also in the Article Ten process, too. Also, as, as a overall thing, even though the state is taking over control, both statutes, Article Ten and ninety-four C, indicate that the local, that there's going to be a need to show compliance with local laws in zoning. And again, unless it's unduly restrictive, the state agency is going to require them to comply with those. Both, both, both statutes require that. It's, it's in, it's in their statutory language. It's stated.
Are they going to go through the same process as, uh, Nextera did where it's been a two and a half year process in trying to get that solar array approved?
Well, with regard to, and again, I didn't want to get into particular projects, but Riverhead Solar Two, that started its process in September of two thousand seventeen. They went through the P I P, then the P S S, and now they're at the application stage. Of course, they're transferring to the ninety-four C. Once that application is deemed admitted and complete, um, I, I believe there's a one-year window by which ORIS must approve it or take action. And, and as far as judicial review is concerned, the, anybody who feels aggrieved by it has ninety days to challenge that. It's in Article seventy-eight and it's in appellate division court exclusively.
Well, Nextera took two years, but I don't think it was necessarily a stringent review. I mean, it got neg decked. There were a lot of reasons that Nextera took two years.
We have till December seventh to respond to this?
To the regulations that have been promulgated. If you go to the, uh, the ORIS website and you click on, I think it's, the link is regulations, you will see the draft regulations which they've proposed. Um, they broke them into two parts, subpart nine hundred dash six, which is a shorter one, deals with pretty much how the, how the site's going to be constructed out. And then the other part is a much longer version and has, uh, more, more language. But those, those comments were extended at least once on, I think, the first part. But now, according to their website, both are due December seventh.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
And I think that the other supervisors are probably, you know, talking about this.
Yes, we are.
A joint letter from all of you saying that the siting should be off the table. And, you know, the concerns of Riverhead being the solar capital of the world. If this goes through, you'll see these solar arrays pop up in East Hampton, Southampton, Southold, and Brookhaven and other towns. If the state just says, it could, you know, making an application, it could go anywhere, pretty much.
Well, they have to be in the, in the code, right?
It's not in their code.
Within the zoning.
No. But it, it circumvents zoning.
Does it?
The, the, well, let me, let me, I don't think I have the specific language, um, unfortunately, for that section. So, but, uh, one, the, the, the code at ninety-four C five B requires that when an application is made, the local jurisdiction must be consulted with in order for the ORIS office to deem it complete. So that, there's a sixty-day window there.
Okay, so you have to say.
Also, um, after it's deemed complete, um, there is a further statement that's got to be submitted by the local law that the facility, in fact, complies with local laws. So there is a provision in there that says that the municipality must submit that statement to say whether the facility does or does not.
Right. And then can the committee override the town, whether the zoning is there or not?
If they find that there's reasons for it, that it's unduly restrictive, yes. But there, there is initially a requirement that the municipality, where the solar or the major energy producing facility is being located, that it does comply with the local laws.
Well, that they consult with the town and then the town has to write a letter saying that it does not comply with the zoning. But then the committee can override it anyway.
The siting board.
Yep, the siting board.
I, I don't know what ORIS is going to do because, again, this has only been put in place since April. There is some language in there. And again, I didn't know we were going to drill down that closely to it. But there is language in the code which says when they can depart from strict compliance with the local laws.
And does the siting board, when an application is made to them, does that require a public hearing?
There is a public hearing process and adjudicary process, yes.
Is that, so that, when does that come?
That comes after the statement is issued by the local municipality, whether it complies with local laws.
So then there must, it says in the law that there has to be a public hearing?
It doesn't say there has to be. There's, there's a process. It can be like a stipulated agreement. It proceeds forward or it could be contested. It, it, it kind of goes, but there's, there's a duality, if you will.
So you could scream until you're blue in the face that you contested and they could still put it there anyway?
And then your remedy is the Article seventy-eight.
Wow. Somehow I don't, it doesn't seem like they would be pushing, I mean, if it's not in the code or in the zoning in an area, I mean, what.
I can't predict what someone's going to do.
We have it in our code, but some of our surrounding towns do not.
Uh, again, I don't want to discuss what other towns are doing.
We'll get into it more another day, though.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing it to us.
That's part of the problem. And that's why this came about, is because the governor's trying to reach his initiative of being one hundred percent renewable energies by two thousand and fifty, I believe it is.
I think that's the right stage.
So they're saying, "We're not waiting for you towns anymore. We're going to pick the sites and we're going to let them do it here."
That's, that's a correct statement that, again, you know, the, the, the state, the assembly bill and, and the Senate bill, and then the adoption or the passing of it by the governor, that one of their stated goals is to achieve those C L C P A targets. But Article Set, Article Ten, the Article Ten process also had a lot of the same language that there was a goal by the state to achieve renewable energy, uh, targets. And that was the reason why that agency had taken on the sole siting status as well. So, I mean, again, while it's a shifting of, of section, the state had already adopted a policy back in, I think it was two thousand and twelve, when they adopted the Article Ten. To, uh, decide that they were going to start taking things away from local control.
Right. And then they didn't meet the deadlines because the deadlines from two thousand and ten was twenty twenty-three. And when they didn't meet the deadlines, or two thousand and twelve, what, the deadline was.
It's now twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty.
Correct.
And they're not meeting those deadlines in their renewables. So now they're just going to take it away. And they lowered it from twenty-five megawatts plus to twenty to twenty-five megawatts is what they're telling me is included in there.
With an option, with an option that's in there, yes.
You know, certainly I pushed for a, a stringent review of, um, Nextera, which I wanted. Um, you wanted to move it along. But in the big picture of things, I mean, we need to control what's in our town. We certainly don't want all this solar in one one nine three three. However, renewable energy is not a bad thing. I mean, I don't think the, the fact that New York State is trying to move forward with renewable energy is, is a terrible thing. Me either. It's that they can.
I'm going to force them to all in one location or allow it to be in our backyard.
Yeah, I prefaced with that. I, I, that's what I, that's why I prefaced with this. But when you talk about, you know, that the governor's trying to ram things through, I mean, yeah, renewable energy, I don't know that he's trying to ram things through, but renewable energy is a good thing.
Well, when you can't get it adopted.
Don't you, I, you believe in climate change, I hope.
When you can't get it through and you can't get it adopted by an assembly bill and by a Senate bill, and you put it in the budget and force people to vote on the, vote on the budget where that document is part of the budget, so you're either a yes or a no on the budget, which includes several other things that you may want in the budget and things that you don't want in the budget, chances are you're going to vote for it. So I don't like when things are pushed into a budget, just as I didn't like when two resolutions or two properties were put in one resolution rather than voting on them separately. But when you couldn't get it passed separately, you put them into one and force people to vote either yes or no for the good one and the bad one. And that's what I don't like. And I don't like taking local control away when you don't have any say as to where it's going to go. And the governor may say, "Hey, you know, that is, in putting it in the budget is basically saying, 'I want this done and we're going to take it out of local control and we're going to have our oversight, siting committee, siting board, and siting.'" And Mark Harrington, Harrington wrote an article on it in Med outlining that it's taking local control away.
Right. And I'm familiar with that. Actually, I brought this all up when we were neg decking Nextera. I brought this up.
You brought up ninety-four C?
Yes. Like, to go back to my point.
I don't remember.
Yeah. Well, I did. Um, I mean, I personally don't like when we don't do a full secret on things, um, you know, when we neg deck things. But to go back, my main point was in the, I, I completely agree that we should have local control over things. I'm just saying, in the big picture of things, doing renewable energy is, is, is a good goal at some point.
And you know what? Every, every single board member here agrees with.
Well, that's what I was asking.
Renewable energy.
That's what, that's what I, that's all I was asking for that.
Yeah, asking.
So if everybody's finished making points, I just want to, yeah, if everybody's finished making points, I just want to say that I sit on the governor's New York State Advisory Council for Agriculture. And we review at the state level every single day projects just like this that are going around the state and the impacts on farmland across the state. My annual meeting with Commissioner Ball is tomorrow. I will bring this up and, and give you a response if he gives one to me.
And we're glad to have you there, Frank.
Yep.
Great.
Yeah, because a lot of the farmers want the renewable energies on the farms. They do. They actually, they do. They want the solar on the farm.
So if the, it's up to the state to cite where those solar arrays are going. I mean, all of our farms could potentially turn into solar as well.
Oh, we can't have it on Main Street, right?
Who knows?
Who knows? Under these, under these regulations, they can designate the riverfront for a solar panel. How horrific is that?
We can do green buildings.
Yeah, let's stop here. Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob, so much for informing us. And we have no items for executive session. So this concludes our work session for today. Want everyone to be safe. Uh, if possible, there were seven COVID testing locations. Um, and please get tested if you can. Can I have a first and a second to close this meeting?
Yeah.
Motion.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed? So move. Thank you and everyone be safe.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's actually, my Zoom meeting is tomorrow at ten o'clock.
You brought it on the radio yesterday.
So when I, when I talk to Commissioner Ball, a lot of what we talk about is.